Gretkin.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Shaner.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Waters.
Here.
We stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mark and Ellen, can you meet me at the microphone there, please? How are you guys today?
Good, how are you?
Good. We have a commendation that reads, whereas you are to be commended for taking the time, the initiative, and the effort to create a beautiful yard that contributes greatly to your neighborhood and to the city of Sioux City, and whereas you should be proud of the work you've done and the beauty that you have created, and whereas we thank you for allowing our citizens to enjoy your beautiful yard and for teaching by example the merits of beautification in a community. Now therefore, I, Robert E. Scott, Mayor of the City of Sioux City, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby commend Ellen and Mark Christopherson of 6841 Palm Valley Drive for exhibiting pride of ownership and being the recipient of the Sioux City's Yard of the Month Award. Like to present this to you guys, say a few words if you would. Do you have any other things to say?
Well, thank you.
What?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We appreciate the recognition.
Okay, we'll go to the consent agenda items two through 11E. Consider them to pass unanimously unless a separate roll call votes asked for by a council member. You want to speak on an agenda item, please come to the podium as I read that item. If you want to speak on an item not on the agenda, please come at the end of the regular meeting under Citizen Concerns. Any speaker should remember to state their name and address or the record, and then provide their statement. I'll move the consent agenda. Second. Two is the reading of the September 13th City Council Minute. Three is a motion approving the Civil Service Commission Annual Report.
Mayor, can I ask Janelle a question on that, please? On the statistics, I just want to make sure I'm understanding those. Which one is the, you have testing processes conducted? You had 91 in FY 2021?
Now, Bertrand, Human Resources Director. I did not bring that document. I was here for another agenda.
That's probably right. Don't. Oh, I'm sorry.
Ninety-one.
Ninety-one.
Can I look at what you're looking at?
Sure. Don't lose all my other post-its.
No, because.
Okay.
Ninety-one testing test processes or?
Yeah, for different job classifications. Yes, police.
But that's way up, Mayor. That's what I'm wondering about. From the other years.
Could be.
Because of COVID last year, normally workforce development conducts our typing tests, but because they were not doing that, we had to come up with a creative way to allow people to do that, so we did them ourselves. And usually the clerical pools have a large amount of applicants, so we had to do multiple sessions of typing tests. That's why the number is way up.
That's about double from 17.
Yep.
That's way up.
Right.
Was there some kind of an online program that you could do it so they could be at home and?
No, we looked for that as well, and we weren't able to find anything online, so we had people come to city facilities, and my staff administered those tests.
And then positions commissioned granted civil service status? That's after the exam or after you go through the process?
No, those are usually new positions that the city has created that, based under Chapter 400, we determined that they should be civil service covered, so the commission therefore has to grant civil service status to any new position.
Okay, thank you.
Four is a resolution amending the Position Classification Manual by adopting an updated job description for the Police Evidence Clerk position. Five are actions relating to grants. A is a resolution authorizing an application for a grant to support the Preserve Iowa Summit and the Hubbard Park Softball Stadium National Register of Historic Places nomination. B is a resolution accepting a grant agreement from the FAA to fund the runway rehabilitation and lighting upgrade project at the airport. C is a resolution accepting a reimbursable grant agreement from the FAA to design and construction inspection of runway rehabilitation and lighting upgrade project. Six are actions adopting construction documents. A is a resolution adopting plans and specs for the Grand View Booster Station Improvement Project. We need to delete that item, so I'll move that.
That should be on item B.
Okay.
Six.
Then we're not deleting that one.
Six A.
Okay, we'll go to B and the resolution adopt.
Mayor, I have a question for Brad on six A. Brad, I appreciate your write-up on this, and you said the project provides for a third pumping unit. What happens if we don't provide that third pumping unit?
Brad Pitts, Utilities Director. As stated in the RCA, the station was constructed in, I think it was 93, with the ability to have three pumps, but they only put two in. Operation would stay the same if we didn't add this, but with this, we improve reliability and redundancy for pumping into the Indian Hills Pressure Zone. And where it really helps is when we have the Indian Hills tank out of service, we can keep constant pressure in the system without any concerns.
Okay, thank you.
And Brad, is this going to help with any pressure problems that might already exist, or is this just more of a, like a side-by-side type thing?
It's more of a side-by-side. It's basically the same, just gives us more flexibility.
Okay.
Trying to remember why in 93 we didn't do that, but okay. B is a resolution adopting construction documents with Milwaukee Railroad Shops and Historic District and Museum Trails Improvement Project. Need to delete that, and I'll move it. Second.
Moore.
Aye.
Shaner.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Gretkin.
Aye.
Sevens are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution approving a First Amendment to the site sublease addendum between Pegas Towers and New Singular Wireless for Maple Street Water Tower. B is a resolution approving consulting and services agreement with Black and Beach for the Grand View Service Level Subpressure Zone Study Project. C is a resolution approving an assignment assumption of agreements between Electronic Innovations and Thompson Electric. I'd like to abstain on that item. I have a conflict of interest.
Mayor.
Do I need to pull that off and vote separate today, or we're good? Okay, I was just making sure.
Mayor, back on seven, B. That's also under Brad's. I just, I want to confirm, so that's going to be one, when the council and the mayor went through the priorities of the American Rescue Plan Funds, this is one of those projects for the $5 million that was allocated? Is that correct?
That's correct. This will be a study to determine what infrastructure is needed in that area.
I'm trying to point those out. I don't, is this maybe one of our first ones, first projects we have that we're actually using the American Rescue Plan Fund?
Yeah, that'll be determined by the study and pretty, the rate of growth out in that area. We certainly don't want to do the study and build that area to capacity before it's warranted. So, once we get this information, we'll have a better idea, but yeah, I believe it was one of the projects that was at the top of the list.
Okay, thank you, Brad.
You're welcome.
Eight are actions authorizing payments. A is a resolution approving fund transfer for August. B is approving, motion approving total payments issued for August. We need to amend this item to approve total payments issued in the reporting period of August 2021, the amount of $13,892,412.74, and I'll move that amendment. Second.
Shaner.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Gretkin.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
C is a resolution authorizing payment to John T. Jones Construction for the 520 Booster Station Facility Improvements Project. Nine are actions relating to property. A is a resolution proposing to grant a temporary easement at 1601 Glendale Boulevard, the petitioner is Marvin Jensen. B is a resolution inviting proposals for the lease of land in the Donner Park Urban Renewal Area, announcing the intent to accept a proposal of crab's car rental and scheduling a public hearing. Ten are applications for beer and liquor license. See the list come forward if you have questions. Eleven are received in the minutes. See the list, see the list come forward if you have any questions. Anyone to be heard on any of those items? Passes five zero. Twelve's a resolution approving a letter of understanding with the Sioux City Regional Convention and Visitor Bureau to provide tourism convention and visitors bureau services and authorizing annual contributions. I'll move that. Second. I would like to know why it's so imperative that, I mean, we've made a commitment, and I'm not necessarily opposed to the commitment, but I'm also not inclined to overfund something when the money didn't all get used the year before, so I guess I'm wondering why my email didn't make sense. If we spent $40,000 less, it looks like to me than what we proposed, then why should we overfund this as well?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to have this discussion. If I may pause for a moment, I'd just like to introduce our new executive director who is here today.
Just one, you got to state your name just for record.
Tim Savona, 401 Gordon Drive.
Thank you.
Sioux City, Iowa 51106. Just like to use an opportunity to double dip here a little bit and introduce our new executive director, if that's okay. Kristy Franz. Kristy joined us about 30 days ago, middle of August, from the Kansas City Market, and has been here on the ground for about a month. I'll just let her say a couple words.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name's Kristy Franz, and I'm the new executive director of the Sioux Regional Visitors Bureau. I'm coming to you from Independence. Independence for four and a half years. Prior to that, I've been in different roles in the hospitality industry, to include executive director for the City of Warrensburg for their Convention and Visitors Bureau, so I've been in this industry for almost 10 years, but I actually am from Sioux City. I grew up here. I lived here from the time I was in kindergarten until I was in high school, and so I consider this my home, and so it's really exciting opportunity for me to get to come and do what I love where, in my hometown, so I'm appreciative of this opportunity and see great things for the city coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And to see how much it's changed, too. Yeah, we've talked a lot about that.
Yeah, it's definitely changed. There's a lot of really big things that have changed since I came back for my class reunion in 16. I won't say what year that was, but I've seen some big changes since then, but, you know, all the really good things that, you know, that I hold dear from when I grew up, those things are all still the same, so I really am excited to be able to share that with others.
Most definitely.
Kristy, how long were you in Warrensburg?
I was there three years.
They have an Air Force base there, so you're?
They do. I was the military coordinator with the Air Force Base.
Oh, excellent.
Through my position.
They don't really have them there. You can't see them. Leave Warrensburg in the morning. They fly across the ocean, they drop bombs in the Middle East, and they're back at night.
That fast. But that's a good experience to have as well, because of the importance of our 185th here and the other guard.
I was a military spouse for 26 years, so I definitely.
There you go.
Got appreciation for the military.
Thank you.
So, thank you. First of all, you guys, your support is critical to our success. We don't take that for granted, and we sincerely extend our thanks for all you've done to help this endeavor get going and get rolling. To answer your question, you know, obviously it was a unique year last year. I think having some seed money, some funds is important. There's a lot that we couldn't really predict on the hotel, you know, our hope is that those hotel fees will help sustain us as we go forward, getting those things set up and what have you. Hopefully build up a solid bank account that we have a year or two of operating revenue. That's kind of the goal. Today, where we're at is, you know, we had a manager position that we hired prior, and now what we've done is we've hired the executive director. So, and we haven't completed a full year cycle yet with all these things. So, we have an executive director now at a different, you know, level, and we're going to be hiring a second person here, posting that job in the next 30 to 60 days. So, this budget cycle, we'll actually have two full-time employees where we're now offering benefits as well. Previously, we weren't doing that, so we had, we had one employee of a manager level instead of a director level and no benefits. So, right there are two examples that we see some significant expense popping up as we continue to grow and get started. We also have over $30,000 as of today in event commitments that we'll be granting to different events to help fund their stays here in Sioux City. So, right off the bat, that's a quick, over, you know, $100,000, $150,000 of expense that we're going to incur this year that we didn't have last year, which is growth. It's positive growth. Last thing I'll add is when we do add that certain employee, we don't believe we'll be able to stay in our current home. We'll probably have to be at that point looking for a new office location, and that may or may not lead to some rent incurred and things of that sort, so it's just a continued evolution, so.
Because right now, we've been able to share an office space and not have that cost.
Downtown partners has been very gracious to allow us to be there at no charge.
That's a good partner to have.
Great partner, yeah. Good synergy, too. Very good synergy.
Tim, could you remind me, please, your fiscal year is?
July to June. Same as the city.
Same as the city.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Because you had something in here about the payment starting October 1.
I think that's just because that's when this originally started, so it was kind of like, you know, first quarter, basically, after the first quarter. Once a year, though, once every.
Once a year, it's paid.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
More questions?
Well, I still don't understand, but it doesn't matter because you got four votes, I'm sure, but you're asking for '22, '23, so when does the next check? Because I always get mixed up when that is. Looks like you're asking for a check October of '22.
Yes. '22 would be, check number one would be the ask this coming October.
You already got one.
That was finishing last year.
Right. So, you don't want to check until October of 2022?
No.
No, it would be this October to go for the next year.
Asking.
Yep.
Look, it says October of '22.
I think fiscal year is '22.
Twenty-three, what it says. Yeah, didn't read that wrong, I know. It said October of '22 and '23. If you're talking fiscal, end of fiscal year, that's different, but.
Yeah, I think that's what they were discussing.
But that's not the way it reads. That's why I'm asking why they're asking for it so far ahead.
I'd have to check that, double-check that language.
Bob, why, it would seem to me, I know you'll disagree, but it would seem to me that one of the COVID relief funds that can be used is to help businesses that had a bad time through the COVID experience. I don't know why we'd use tax dollars for this when it would seem to me you could use COVID funds, because if this doesn't help hotels and motels and restaurants in this community that suffered dramatically, then we should close it down today. Doesn't make sense that we'd use tax dollars when we have those funds available that we're trying to use for that exact purpose. Now, I'll find out how wrong I am, but at least I feel.
Here comes Teresa.
Teresa Fitz, Finance Director. Actually, we can't use the funds for that because it's an expansion of services, so we didn't have the service in place prior to, so we, and it would be an expansion of services, sort of to fund the tourism department, we cannot do that.
Had it been in place prior to COVID, we could.
Yep, and it would have been, we should have approved it would have been detrimental.
A few years ago, like he was supposed to, we could have used it, so I guess.
So, unfortunately.
Amen, amen. I would have loved that.
What took you so long?
I would have loved that to happen.
So, what was the official starting date for the CVB?
You know, I think our bylaws were adopted in September of 19.
I was going to say December of 19 or something like that, yeah. Late fall of 19.
Because we're about to launch our tutorial in March with a date set when COVID kind of landed on us.
Well, if it was December 19, wouldn't we beat COVID?
But what Teresa's saying is you don't show a loss.
You have to show that you lost.
But that doesn't necessarily matter.
But I understand what your point is.
You can use those funds to spur business, I thought. Well, you know what? Let's go over to the county because they get a lot better rulings over there than we can get out of you here. I can see that right now, so.
Teresa Fitz, Finance Director. We can utilize it for businesses in town, but, so if they had a business that was detrimented, we could certainly, they could submit an application, and that $2.5 million that you set aside could be used for that, but unfortunately, the service is not eligible.
Yes, not the Tourism Bureau itself.
Correct, because it wasn't in place prior, right. Doesn't mean we couldn't partner with them, you know, for entities that did have issues, but.
Yeah, entities or organizations or something, there might be an opportunity there.
Yep.
To think creatively.
They get this hundred, that'll be plenty, okay. So, Tim, just kind of an update, maybe between you and Alex. How many hotels are participating right now?
So, we're right at 12 or 13 signed up, and we're collecting money actively from just a little bit over half of those.
Okay.
The other ones, we continue to work with on getting various procedures in place with, on their end, from an accounting, financial standpoint.
So, the CVB budget that's in our homework says room fee $216,000. Is that money from hotel room fees you've collected already? Is that what that means?
That, yeah, it's a forecast based on.
Oh, it's a forecast.
Yeah, based on a projection. That's a budget, yeah.
I didn't see projection anywhere on that page.
Well, it's a budget, so.
Is that based upon?
It's a goal.
I thought it was the current budget, but not so. Is that based on the six or seven, or is that based on all of them?
It's based on what we've seen, so we're confident we'll hit that number.
It could be a lot higher.
It could be a lot higher, yes. And even though some of that was during COVID times when occupancy was struggling, so.
Are there other hotels still considering?
Yes. We're still actively working to land.
Great.
Yeah, we've had some good conversations with others to get them on board, as well as other communities. I know we've still been talking with the Dakota Dunes and their interest as well.
So, have you funded any projects?
Yes.
So far, how many?
We've helped bring two events to town that have been at two different properties, and then we have written commitments to three or four that are coming.
That are coming.
In early '22.
Early '22.
Yeah. And we'll tell you, like, this is how they're able to come.
What were the two? What were the two?
One was, forgive me, I don't know the names. Ron had done them prior to his leaving. One was through Stoney, and the other one, I think, was through that property that's not called the Holiday Inn anymore, but it was.
The Riverfront, which might have been.
Or Smaller.
I think Shriner's was one we assisted with as well.
So, does your committee, your board come together, and you make the decision on who you choose to fund, or how is that decision made?
So, that decision is made by the staff, not the board.
Okay, so that'd be the executive director and the new employee.
Yep.
And she can make recommendations, and right now, we've been working with other organizations to see what their protocol is, you know, how do you evaluate what the return on investment is? So, if we want to give $10,000 to incentivize someone, what are, what's that return on investment? You know, is it the number of hotel rooms they're going to sell? Is it a multi-year commitment, you know, for that event to come back? So, then they weigh those things, but we've been having conversation with other areas, such as Council Bluffs and them, as far as what their protocol is.
And so, once, once an event has taken place, you get that type of information back from the hotels? You request it, they share it, they?
Yeah, they can let us know, you know, how did it go? How was their weekend, you know, as far as their occupancy? How much did they do? And then there's a calculation for the economic impact, you know, there's a pretty standard equation that you, or algorithm that you can type in for how much a return that that would be.
But as opposed to, they can let us know. Are they required to provide that information?
So, they can let us know, yeah.
Okay.
As far as what that is. I was meaning.
But you basically know how many rooms they booked.
Yes, and I was meaning like economic impact as far as, say, the restaurant.
Danny Dollars, we used to call them around here.
What'd you call them?
Yeah.
Danny Dollars.
Yeah, we're still paying those dollars. Yeah, ultimately, there's an application process that we're finalizing, and then they'll fill it out, and then based upon the completion of the event, they'll fill it out again based on results.
Okay.
So, if an event walks in and says, I want 10 grand because I'm going to bring 1,000 hotel rooms this weekend, when they can fill out the application, we don't necessarily release the funds until we go through the protocol to say, like, well, did they actually deliver?
Yeah, absolutely.
So, yes, there's a process being, but a lot of this, to be honest, a lot of this is happening in real time. You know, we're creating these applications as we speak. I mean, that's part of the, part of the get-up-and-going effort, you know, bidding on the events, finding the events to bid on, you know, that's, that's part of this conversation as well.
And some of the other expense that you saw outlined in your budget are also like swag items, is what I call them. It's things that you're giving away, you're going to conventions, or like, or the other one was like Shriner's requested when they came. I forget, I think it was a thousand. I think it was a thousand bags, so we had 1,000 Explore Sioux City bags with different things in them, so we're ramping up and buying those things as well.
And how do we make that better as well, you know?
Sure.
Building upon.
Well, if you ever hand out golf balls, Mr. Moore will be sure to want to do.
Sioux City. Hey, Tim, so to Pete's earlier point, FY '21, the room fee was $50,000. That was the budgeted amount, and now it's at $216,000 for FY, that's '22, correct? That's what we're.
Yes.
Yeah, the, yeah.
July 1, 2021, June 32.
Correct.
The city has paid on their commitment one payment? Are you going to check that?
So, this is what I need to, I need to confirm. The city contributed $100,000, but I believe that was in the last fiscal year, and the current ask is for $100,000 this fiscal and another $100 next fiscal.
Correct.
The timing of those checks I'm uncertain on, but that is ultimately the conversation.
From the best of my understanding, the first payment would be on October 1st of 2021, and the second payment would be on October 1st of 2022.
Or those respective budget years, yep. Fiscal years.
The city made a commitment for what, Bob? For $300,000?
Well, previously, it was 100 for one year. Now, we're saying 100 per year for the next two.
I'm pleased to see the budget because I wanted that be part of this whole.
Yeah, of course. I think this was sent.
Yeah, well, and it was, but that was something that Dan, you had requested early on, which I'm glad that we were able to hash out and kind of get a better direction, a better idea of where those funds would go.
Thank you. So, I'll just tell you my problems. Number one, I don't think you used the money, and so I don't want to overfund. Number two, I hate to bind a future council because we're guessing what that budget's going to do next year. We have no clue how good or bad this organization will do, but I know, I've been in government long enough to know that when you make a commitment, they take the money, every organization does, you can't blame them for that, so I just, I just have some philosophical problems with doing that, so. Not, I know you're going to feel like I'm not supporting your organization, that couldn't be further from the truth. It's just how we fund it is my problem, so.
Well, and I would definitely want you to hopefully feel a little eased that it's not overfunding just because of some of the things we've outlined of future growth and looking forward to.
You figured it based upon what you have for hotel and motel rooms now, basically. You don't know what you're gonna have. If this is abundantly successful, you could have a lot more revenue there. If you do, if it isn't, if it isn't overly successful, then they should come back and ask for a hundred. I get it. But I don't feel like binding a council next year to a hundred thousand dollars. Unless we be realistic, the majority of you may not be here. I mean.
Could be.
We know one for sure isn't. And I'm not saying you guys are gonna lose an election, but I don't like to do that.
So, you're, would rather see it be a one-year ask at a time?
Yeah, I would, but then.
Yeah, it's just tough to do budget planning and projections. And I would say to every other community that we've went to that has funded the organization has been multi-year. But I understand.
All, all but one. One of them wasn't.
Oh, one.
Yeah, one of them's going year by year still, not after the first ask. Yeah, we haven't gone back in year two.
Well, anyway, you guys can vote how you want. It's no big deal.
Okay.
Look, I would just say regardless, we appreciate the support. We don't take it for granted. We obviously, you know, we, we've preached pretty hard that, you know, the city has really pushed this through and, and made sure that there's, there's accountability and, and progress in this category, so.
And a return on that investment, for sure.
So, we thank you for, for what you are able to do and what you're willing to do. And just know that we don't take it for granted. So, thank you.
Thanks, Tim. You, Tim.
This has already been moved?
Seconded.
And seconded.
Waiting for you to vote.
Oh, just waiting for me?
Mayor moved it. Waters seconded.
Passes five, uh, four to one, I vote no. Thirteenth resolution approving one-year extension with Gil Halling for the, of the solid waste collection recycling disposal agreement deferred from September thirteen, twenty twenty-one. Anyone to be heard? I'll move it.
Second.
My understanding was I was gonna get a memorandum or a memo, but I didn't get that. According to Mr. Gil, he called me on this. Was I, did I miss something or?
We got a memo?
Oh, that just, that's, okay. He said you were gonna have one today. I didn't know what that meant. I, I still don't like this, but I, I don't think it's right. I don't think, I think you're limiting even guys with small trailers out there if they happen to be a commercial guy. What, are the guys that are dumping grass clippings, you're certainly not limiting them because it doesn't go to the landfill anyway, right?
Roger Benz, Environmental Services. I have with me Michael Herbst, who's with Waste Connections, Gil Halling, District Manager. And yes, you're right. They, they still have the ability to take those items out to the convenience center.
Yeah, because that, you take that for.
Sure. Yeah. Yeah, and there were a number of, of small dump trailers out there even last week. They do what they can to com- uh, accommodate as many as they can.
I guess I was shocked to learn that we don't have a transfer station because that's kind of what, what was sold us way back when we did this. I kind of remember it because I was kind of here.
Oh, right.
But now I find out it's really not a transfer station.
Right, right. Yeah, it's, uh, it's not permitted for a transfer. It's only permitted for a convenience center.
So, what do you have in Woodbury County?
Woodbury County is a transfer station out at, uh.
Doesn't that seem somewhat unique that a, a small, little bitty Woodbury County that hardly has any waste? So, when I pick, so the garbage man that picks up the waste in Amthen, Iowa, where does he dump that? In the garbage.
Woodbury.
It goes through the Woodbury.
Through the Woodbury.
Yeah, yeah. I guess I just find that hard to believe that we're not, but they are.
Well, what makes one a transfer station and not the other?
Well, Leonard tells me that it's based upon the amount of tonnage. You, you're limited if you're, and you don't, and you have to have a leach field, which I don't understand how Woodbury County has a leach field. But anyway, that's like the two differences, right?
Yeah, right. Yeah, you need to have tanks. It's more, it's more permitted under like EAP or P, EPA and, and, uh, and so there's a lot more into a, a transfer station.
So, there is no leach field out there at Twenty-Eighth Street? Well, you're sitting on top of a landfill. I find that it's just impossible to believe that stuff, but I don't know. We got a motion and a second, right? Well, you guys need to do a better job of letting that small contractor know that the waste is ten dollars a ton cheaper at Jackson. Because I don't think the average guy knows that.
Yeah, we have publications that we give out. They communicate that on the website.
Yeah, but let me ask you a question. How many people you think go to the website? Nobody.
Check the price.
From my experience in talking with a lot of people, yeah, not too many. So, we are reaching.
If it's a small contractor, guess what? He's trying to make a living. He doesn't, he doesn't get on your website to see where he should dump his garbage.
He just heads to Twenty-Eighth Street?
Huh?
He just heads out to Twenty-Eighth Street?
Well, because he's been able to do it for a hundred years or.
And now that he's getting turned away, is there any signage or anything out there that talks about?
Didn't you say you were gonna make a pamphlet or something that talked about that?
Yeah, we, yeah, we did that, you know, when this become an issue eighteen months ago. So, yeah, when, when those individuals come through with, with the size of dump trailers that we weren't able to accommodate and, and even others, in case they had other trailers that they, we, you know, weren't there with, they received that information so that they knew or they could pass it along to other individuals.
The other thing you could do, again, I don't know how many of them would see it necessarily, but you could reach out to Ann Westra with the Communications Department and really push it on social media to try to tag those companies or let them know. Or if Public Works has any meetings or anything with any contractors, you can make sure that they know when they're doing. For instance, if they're going in to get any permits or going in to do any remodeling or anything like that, at least then perhaps you can give them a flyer on the front end rather than trying to catch them on the back end.
Sure.
Permitting is a good time.
I hate to say it because you're in that business too, but this is, this is forcing people, some small contractors, to rent a roll-off. That's what it's doing. I mean, my kids and I do houses. Guess what? We've, we put roll-offs now because it's such a hassle to go unload. And that doesn't seem fair to me either, but.
Is that so, more expensive?
As a.
Can be.
Work that.
Yeah. You're just paying rent on the deal, so by the time I figure the labor and that, it's cheaper. But not everybody has a full roll-off worth of stuff either.
Right.
Problem. Lynn Bloom's gotta love you and God bless.
There's other options as, as we go forward. You know, this is based on the current permitting, which I don't know when the current permit was started or initiated, being new here in the last year. But as we go into the next permitting cycle, if the city is interested in changing that permit, that's always something that we can facilitate as part of that process. I don't recommend it based on the facility size and current composition, but there's always opportunity.
Well, it sounds as though it's worth investigating.
But yeah, please, if you can get in on letting people know on the front end, I think that would go a lot, a lot farther than trying to catch them on the back end and saying, hey, you can, you know you can do this here for ten dollars, cheaper a tonnage or whatever that is.
Yeah, I was out at the, uh, convenience center and, and did see one of their forms for a, or an account permit. And that was an idea to put, attach that on there.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
How about a permission? Awesome.
So, they at least have some knowledge based upon that. And then on your end, knowing that going forward, we want to try to be proactive or when we enter negotiations down the road, that that's something that's important to us. Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Passes five-zero ordinance amending chapter five-point-two-zero Solid Waste Municipal Code to clarify language and increase fees to coincide with the current solid waste agreement. First consideration approved September thirteen, two thousand twenty-one. I'll move second reading.
Second.
Five-zero, is anybody opposed to waiving statutory rule?
No.
No.
We'll move it.
Second.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Redkin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Move third reading.
Second.
Passes five-zero, citizen concerns. Anyone to be heard? Council concerns. Pete?
No, I have none. Thank you.
Julie?
I have none today either.
No, we wouldn't be that lucky.
You better believe it, buddy. Um, all I would say is, um, I mean, a, a few other things going on. One thing that I forgot to mention a, a while back was actually art splash. If any of you were able to attend that, I don't, I don't think we talked about it much in council, but I just want to at least commend, uh, staff for the hard work that went into putting on art splash. I thought they had great attendance. One of the things that I went to, I went down there a couple of the different days, um, Friday and Saturday. And I was trying to talk to the artists, quite a few of them. And they all remarked at how well they had been doing, how well the, the sales had been going and were really impressed with our community. One of the things that was cool that I did not know about, um, this art splash was that there was, um, there was a glass blower from Virginia, I believe, that, um, was actually is world-renowned, holds shows all over. And she was able to stop and be at our show because she was crossing the country and talked to another vendor that said there are people, people that literally will follow her around because of the following that she has. And so, um, and so I thought that was pretty great to be able to welcome her to our community. And there were others that said it was their first time and that they really, really enjoyed it and thought that our staff was exceptional. And so, I just wanted to commend them at least in front of the council.
How do you feel about it, having it downtown?
So, what I heard, what I heard and what I saw was very positive. I'd be curious on staff's feelings. We did get it in one of the memos that was just talking about how attendance at the Gilcrest Learning Center and those other areas in the art center was through the roof because more people were going through and more people around there. So, I think the more we can expose people to the exhibits that we have in-house, I think the better. And, and I, I think the layout worked. I, like I said, drove down there a couple of times and I didn't think traffic was overly disrupted. I'd be curious what PD's, um, take on it was. But from my perspective, it worked really well to have downtown, I thought.
Great location for it.
I would agree with that. It showcases the art center itself at Gilcrest Learning Center. You know, notwithstanding the fact that Riverside Park was a, actually a pretty good location.
Yeah.
As well. But when we closed the street, we talked about that. I feel bad for the ones that are fronting the closure of the streets because they do get some comments from motorists not being happy about it being closed, but.
Oh, really?
It's, uh, it can become an annual event, and I think they want to grow that and make it a campus-type thing.
Yeah.
I, I had the same comments from the artist and lots of good people there and went both Friday and, I think, Sunday, Saturday? I don't remember if I was there Saturday.
I tried putting stuff on your card, but.
Thank you, yeah.
No doubt, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and the, and the other point that Dan reminded me of too, that the artist commented, was just how much easier it was to unload, um, their art and set up because you're on a street rather than out in the park. That was, yeah, exactly. To have that paved area made the load-out and load-in much easier. So, I just wanted to, at least in, in session, be able to commend them for the work and effort that they did. The other thing, um, that I just wanted to bring up was just to remind, um, our community of the importance of vaccinations and taking COVID seriously. I was looking at our email. We get these, uh, weekly COVID-nineteen updates. And it's pretty troubling when you see that on, um, August sixteenth, we had a hundred and fifty-seven cases. Seven percent of those tested were positive. And then, um, less than a month later, uh, so we went from one fifty-seven, one hundred fifty-seven cases. Less than one month later, we're at four hundred and fifteen cases last week. And, uh, that percentage of positivity has also doubled. Went from seven percent to fourteen-point-seven. So, I'd really encourage those individuals, um, that are, that are waiting, that are looking for more data, to please consult your doctor, um, as far as vaccinations and try to protect our community so that we can keep everything open. I would also encourage people to think about the hospitalizations. Uh, I don't know about, I, I've heard that our hospitals, um, have capacity. I've also heard that they're starting to take on cases from Sioux Falls because I had a friend that was actually trying to get into Sioux Falls, uh, for a procedure, a life-saving procedure, actually, and was told that she is thirteenth on the list. So, they have a waiting list to get into a Vera up there. So, I think that's pretty concerning, and I just want to make sure that our community is as safe as possible. And when I see that our fully vaccinated rate is only forty-three-point-nine percent, that's pretty troubling. So, I would just, in the, in the interests of public health, I hope that we can, um, do the best job that we can. So, that's all I have, Mayor.
Hey, Dan?
Alex, I remembered to bring this for the mayor.
Hey, there we go.